Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, February 13th, 2024. Where Clerk please take the role.
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle, President.
Here.
Six Members present.
Thank you. Please rise now for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been amended. Our next order of business is proclamations, beginning with Councilwoman Warwick.
Hello. Would Ursula and Homer Craig please come up with their friends and family?
Surprise.
Fill in all.
Oh, they're all over. So, yeah, I see your sister online. So, welcome everyone. Thank you for joining. This is a surprise today, a surprise proclamation for Mr. and Mrs. Craig. I do want to say this was Joe Heppner's idea, and he could not be here today, but I want to acknowledge that. We also knew that we had to keep it a secret because Ms. Ursula would never allow it if we had asked her ahead of time. So, thank you so much for everyone for being here. I just do quickly want to say, you know, in the Hazelwood community, the Craigs are, they are an institution. They're at every event. They're always helping. And, you know, individually, Mr. Craig, you know, at every meeting, he always has something thoughtful to say. He, he has been a dedicated city employee, and he's just a treasure to have, so much wisdom and insight. And Mrs. Craig, you always hold us accountable, no matter how long any of us have known you. In fact, I still, every election, I'm like, hmm, I don't know. I don't know if I'm getting Ms. Ursula's vote. I hope so. So, at any rate, let me get to it, to the proclamation, and then when I'm done, if anyone up here would like to say a few words, just, you know, you're welcome. Anyone is welcome to come up, and I'll, of course, invite Mr. and Mrs. Craig to say a few words as well. All right, so here goes. Whereas Homer Craig grew up on Monongahela Street in Hazelwood, where he attended Gladstone Elementary and Gladstone Junior High and Taylor Alderdyce Senior High School, and whereas Mr. Craig served in the military as a warrant officer and was stationed in Germany where he met his future wife Ursula Wolf, they were married in 1964. And whereas Mr. Craig served as a Pittsburgh Police Officer from 1967 to 1994, during which time he worked as a K-9 Special Operations and trained paramedic volunteers for the Community Intensive Supervision Project, as well as assisting with public safety in the Hill District at Hill House and retired as a sergeant. And whereas Mr. Craig is a member of the YMCA, the Holy Cross Lutheran Chapel, the Hazelwood Initiative, the Greater Hazelwood Community Collaborative, and whereas Mrs. Craig has volunteered with the Holy Cross Church, St. John's Food Bank, YMCA Food Bank, and the Hazelwood Initiative Safe Halloween Event, and as a member of Jada House, the Hazelwood Initiative and Arts Excursions Unlimited, and whereas the Craigs attend every community meeting held in Hazelwood, and for decades have consistently worked to advocate for needs of Hazelwood residents, and have made the community safer, more welcoming, and more beautiful, and whereas the Craigs have touched the lives of countless Hazelwood families and hold a special place in so many Hazelwood hearts, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and thank Homer and Ursula Craig for a lifetime of service to both the Hazelwood community and the city as a whole, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, February 13th, 2024 to be Homer and Ursula Craig Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Congratulations.
Any other motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proclamation has been approved. Congratulations.
All right, Mr. Craig, would you like to say a few words? Here, we'll just turn this to the side.
As you all know, can you hear me?
Yes.
As you all know, I'm a man of few words, so I'm gonna make this as brief as I can. I wouldn't be the man I am without the family I have. So, I first want to acknowledge my wife. I wouldn't be me without her. But then, my children are here, my grandchildren are here, and my great-grandchildren are here. So, that's four generations of one family. That's something to be proud of. I'm proud of what I did in the community, but I'm more proud of the family that has supported me and allowed me to be who I am. And when I say the family, I'm not just talking about bloodlines. There's a young man here who's a hero in his own, in his own right. Howard Jackson. And I mentored him maybe 35, 40 years ago, and he's like a son, too. So, I want him to be acknowledged, too. Semper Fi. Semper Fi.
Semper Fi.
And I want to thank the community, because without you, and I'm looking around, there's my present pastor here, there's also Reverend Murray, who I was surprised and very happy. He's a good, good Reverend. When he was a little boy, I never thought he'd be a Reverend, but he's a good Reverend. And there's so many of you out here that I knew as kids that you're good people, and you've supported me and allowed me to be who I am. I got a lot more to say, but I'm not gonna say it, because I promised you, and I like to keep my promises. I just want to acknowledge again my wife and our councilwoman, Barbara, and also, she's not my councilwoman, but Teresa Kell Smith, because she has been very supportive, even though I'm not one of her constituents. I'm gonna end it there and turn it over to my wife, because I know she got something to say.
Actually, I don't have nothing to say. You said it all. And I like to say hello, Whitney. She's on the camera, Homer.
Oh, one of my granddaughters in Texas. My doctor granddaughter is looking on the camera.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, how you doing? Unlike my dad, my name is Sasha Craig. I'm the youngest of the four Craig children. Unlike my dad, I'm not very, I'm not very vocal, but I would like to thank Councilwoman Warwick for this honor for me, my family, my parents. It's interesting. Growing up in Hazelwood, it was, it was actually an honor. There's a saying that is often used, but unfortunately today, it's not very often implemented. And it says it takes a village to raise a child. And my Hazelwood village showed up today, and they showed out for my mom and dad. So, thank you. Thank you, Joe Heppner, who we played Little League with. Thank you, actually, a lot of my friends and family who I grew up with. I appreciate that. And today is Homer and Ursula Craig Day, and I'll keep it at that.
Whitney, did you want to say a few words? So go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good morning. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. Grandma and grandfather, I love you guys. I'm so proud of both of you. You've always fostered the idea of leaving something better than you found it. These are not just words, but the principles which you have lived your lives. You've role modeled for your children, your grandchildren, and your great-grandchildren. I have tons of memories with you guys going to various churches, the Jewish Community Center, the Hazelwood Y, and of course, your beautiful community garden. And it always had me lend a hand, which I will admit drove me absolutely crazy when I was growing up. But of course, looking back, I can see 2020, and I know that you included me in your community involvement to instill the same mindset that you guys have in giving back. My grandparents helped me find the joy in giving back to my community, and I encourage everyone to live like Homer and Ursula Craig and leave the world better than you found it.
Is there anyone else? Reverend Murray, do you want to say a few words?
Good morning. Good morning to one and all that's here. And what a wonderful day to be in person, to watch. It happened to me as well. And so, I know the feeling, Homer, and I know the feeling, Ursula, and I know the feeling, the whole family, and it's an honor to be recognized to this magnitude. Mr. Homer, you didn't have to worry about whether I was gonna be a Reverend or not. The one thing you did instill in me, and that was, from an early child, the fear of the law. That fear has encompassed in me what it takes to learn to be a law-abiding citizen. And that, with the help of my parents and in the loss of my mom and dad, I have also, I had chose you without telling you. I had chose you as my father figure. And I know your field with wisdom, and that's why I tap you as a resource. And I'm learning that all that you're sharing with me has helped broaden my awareness for not just life, but how to be a good community advocate. So, thank you so much. Congratulations to you and your entire family, and thank you, Council, for recognizing Mr. Craig.
Well, Mr. Homer, I used to be in your hair, buddy, at St. Stephen's running around, and you helped develop character, and you made us respect unity in the community. That was the most thankful thing that I engaged with growing up. And it was like, when you have a community and unity, you could go ahead and open up doors and touch others' lives. And I'm thankful for mom, oh, she already know I called her mom, okay, to reflect the love of our father figure, just like Reverend said. I am so blessed and humble to engage and be a part of your life. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Pastor Jansen, pastor of Holy Cross in Hazelwood. And as somebody who works a lot in the community and has the opportunity to speak to Homer and Ursula, both personally as their pastor, but also as a community leader, not someone who's grown up with them, I can say that behind the closed doors, behind the public meetings and everything, they always care about not only today, but creating a better future for the community tomorrow. Mr. Craig is always adamant on thinking about the children and thinking about ways to engage them, both in the way Reverend Murray said, and understanding their vocation as a citizen, but also understanding that they too can have a great childhood, just like he experienced, and just like his family experienced in the community. And so, I just want to say thank you for not only taking me in, as I came into the community and helping open some doors for us to continue our work in the community, but also being a friend, being a brother and sister in Christ, and always cutting time out of your week to set an example for others, not only by your words, but also your works in the food clothing engagements. You heard they run, they help with three food banks in the community. In their retirement, they never retired. They're always working, and they often set that example for the community just by their actions. So, God bless you. Thank you for all of your time and effort in the community, and we're just getting started.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Anita?
I still call Mrs. Craig, Ms. Craig, and Homer Homer. I go way back. I'm older, but I've been knowing them since I was a little girl. And I thank God for Ms. Craig and Homer. And Barb, you left out, she, they're both members of the Monongahela Marsden Block Association. So, I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. And Ms. Craig, I thank you for all you do. You're always volunteering. We just had a cleanup at the church on Saturday. She said, I'll be there. She's at the food bank. She's everywhere. Someone asked the other night at a meeting, what's her title? What's she doing? I said, she's everywhere doing everything for everybody. So, we thank you, Ms. Craig. We thank you, Homer. We thank you for your wisdom and your knowledge, and God bless you.
I'm Dave Bruton. I'm Director of Real Estate at Hazelwood Initiative, and I'm proud to be a friend of Mr. Homer and Ms. Ursula. Sasha, it's nice to meet you. Your grandmother talks a lot, your mother talks a lot, sorry, mother talks a lot about you. Anyway, Homer, you've been such a key part of Hazelwood and Hazelwood Initiative. I know that the Woods House, the oldest house in the city, would not be standing if you hadn't fought long before I got to Hazelwood to keep it there. And Ursula, as my time in Hazelwood comes to an end, I, every time I saw you, you asked how I was doing and how my grandchildren were. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay, great. Well, let's have a photo if members want to come up. Yeah, so everyone just sort of squeeze in. We can go up here behind.
If all those here for the Henry Howland Garnett proclamation would please come forward. Before reading the proclamation, I'll simply say, Dr. Henry Howland Garnett is one of the sort of great abolitionists, pastors, ministers, educators in our American history. I first came to know of him because he was the first organizing pastor at my home church of Grace Memorial Presbyterian. And now we have individuals who are working to honor his legacy and create a whole weekend to honor his legacy and carry it forward. So, with that, whereas Dr. Henry Howland Garnett was born into slavery in Charlottesville, Maryland on December 25th, 23rd, excuse me, 1815, and whereas in 1824, his family of 11 secured permission to attend a funeral from where they all escaped in a covered wagon via Wilmington, Delaware, as they were aided by the Quaker and Underground Railroad Station Master Thomas Garnett. And whereas through the family, and whereas though the family was split after their escape at the age of 10, Dr. Garnett's family was able to reunite and move to New York City, where he attended the African Free School from 1826 to 1831. Whereas Dr. Garnett's education was interrupted in 1823 as circumstances led him to leave New York and seek employment to return later in life to the city, as he continued his education and became a Presbyterian minister. And whereas, as a preacher, Dr. Garnett became known for fighting for emancipation and against the sin of slavery, an abolitionist whose militant approach against slavery influenced and inspired many. And whereas in 1843, he delivered one of his most famous speeches, A Call to Rebellion, to the National Convention in Buffalo, New York, where he urged African-Americans to take up arms and free themselves. Whereas Dr. Garnett became the first African-American to deliver a sermon in the House of Representatives on February 12th, 1865. Whereas Dr. Garnett pastored several Presbyterian churches, including Liberty Presbyterian Church in Troy, New York, Shiloh Presbyterian Church in New York City, and 15th Street Presbyterian Church in Washington, DC. And whereas upon relocating to Pittsburgh in 1868 to serve as president of Avery College in the Northside, Dr. Garnett became the first organizing pastor of Grace Memorial Presbyterian Church, the oldest African-American Presbyterian church in Allegheny County. Whereas known as the father of the African-American Presbyterians in southwestern Pennsylvania, Dr. Garnett was named an ambassador and minister to Liberia in 1881 before passing away on February 13th, 1882. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare February 16th through February 18th, 2024 to be Henry Howland Garnett Days in the City of Pittsburgh. May I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamation has been approved.
My name is Gavin Walton. I'm the current pastor of Grace Memorial Presbyterian Church in the Hill District. I first want to thank President Lavelle, as well as the rest of Council for acknowledging the incredible life and witness of Reverend Dr. Henry Howland Garnett. I would just encourage all people in Pittsburgh this weekend, and just in general, to research and read up on the history around Reverend Garnett, because while he did have an incredible impact here in Pittsburgh, being a founder, founding pastor of our church, as well as the president of Avery College, my sense is that he is not as well-known here in this area as he is nationally. This is, this is a giant, not only in Christian or Presbyterian circles, but he is an instrumental part in the African-American prophetic stream. And I think that his witness and the way that he went about advocating for his people is incredibly relevant for today and a necessary reminder for who we ought to be as a people moving forward. So, thank you all, and may you be blessed this day.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Bell Suver, Lalonde, Lalongue Malawi. I'm a member of the American Chemical Society, American Physical Society, the American Society for Microbiology, among other associations. I have a network of more than 200,000 specialists in these sciences. Global Intelligence Society candidate for president 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. My public comments are more than 99% fact accurate. I seek optimal for regional, world regional information and intelligence sources for upgrades. A council concern is pre-university student career prep emphasizing STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. PUSCP STEM. Mr. Lavelle did a PUSCP STEM proc 6th February 2024 with more than 20 Pittsburgh Public School students, PPSers. Dr. Wayne Walters, superintendent. STEM-based career success requires the periodic table of the elements, PTE, foundational biological, chemical, physical information necessary for research intelligence in biology, chemistry, and physics. Most of Lavelle's PPS STEM careers, they were blank on the PTE. Africa Hausa, Ilmen Halitu, biology. Research suggested by Dr. Olumbe Basir alter the bonds of CHNO atoms from a two-ring DNA amino acid, purine, like adenine, affecting subcellular nuclear dissolution or resolution, re-molding the soma. Lavelle's PPSers are unready, but the DOD, definitely ready. Asia Nihongo, Kagaku, chemistry. Neurobiochemist, Dr. Tasashi Tokudu. Her research before Neuralink attached SI atoms to C12 graphene nanotube strands with GCDAU nanodots to make implantable optogenetic lab anachip bio devices to affect brain neural patterns. The Lavelle-Walters PPS, boys and girls, not ready. Latin America, Espanol, and European Deutsch, Physica and Physics. Argentinian biophysics pioneer, Dr. Maximo Valentini. German biophysicist, Dr. Elizabeth Reeper. Her research has to do with the application of physics to quantum theory to biology. That means quantum wave function describing DNA in a superposition of mutated and non-mutated states is changed by observation and coherence. Our people are not ready. Our PPS students are not ready for this.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Katie Guaronesia. I do not see her online. Is Katie Guaronesia with us? If not, that exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's any, she is online? Sorry. Katie?
Hi. Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks so much. Hi, my name is Katie Guaronesia. I'm originally from Pittsburgh's Spring Hill neighborhood. I've lived all over the city, born and raised in multiple neighborhoods throughout the city. I currently reside in Avalon. I was really on the fence on whether or not I should come to comment this, but I've been paying a lot of attention to the news regarding housing. paying a lot of attention to the news regarding housing, housing crisis, what have you, within our city. And I just wanted to add some insight as I worked for a large rental property company for about half a year before a issue with my car and I wasn't able to get there anymore. Besides the point, I just wanted to offer my insight that I gained through working with this company. This company started in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania with one rental property. And at the point, at this point now, this company and its linked companies own over eight hundred properties throughout the country. It's grown this much just in the last decade. And within the Pittsburgh area, they own one hundred fifteen rental properties, majority residences, but some commercial properties. And I worked in the regional office that manages these one hundred fifteen local properties. And I just wanted to shed some light on how the prices were being determined. There were two leasing agents in this company at the time in this, in this region for this company. And one, one leasing agent was explaining to the newer leasing agent how to determine the prices. And I, I was answering the phones. I was, I was determining how to best help residents once they were already into the properties. But I wanted to also state that both of these leasing agents were not from Pittsburgh. One had been freshly in the Pittsburgh area for like five years. The other was super new. She'd only been in Pittsburgh for like six months. And so like neither of these women were local to the Pittsburgh area. And as the, the senior leasing agent was explaining to the newer leasing agent how to determine the rental property prices, she said, okay, look, when a new, when a new unit opens up, someone moves out, what we're gonna do, we're, we're gonna reassess the price every time. So we are going to look at...
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll also be given three minutes to speak.
Hello. My name is Howard Philip Jackson, H.P. Jackson, BPEP. Grew up with N double A C P all my life. My last statement was here on Wednesday when I was disappointed and about the frustration on the support that like our Pennsylvania education system has deteriorated. But what I found out, we have a new administration now from the twelve-year administration. And my heart, I need to say forgive me on the Pennsylvania education system because I see a new administration right now that's advocating to our babies. I mean, it's so humbling. And you know what? A child, while he's crawling and walking, he pays attention to everything. I remember being a dog. I mean, growing up and our parents would say, oh, that child don't know what you're doing. But that child watches every move you make. And that's where we got to be mentors for our children, okay? About, and we will get smacked when we watch them smoke a cigarette or whatever. When we put one in our mouth, they knock the hell out of us, okay? That's what I'm saying on change in the stereo habits at home. Now, our young people at home, our parents, babies, been having babies for years, all these generations, but it is, it goes back to the homes. And you don't know the dark secrets, what's going on behind those closed doors. Because our teachers are great babysitters, okay? They are great teachers to teach a child to be a child, to engage, to be adult. And I really have to engage on the Pittsburgh Public School system. Our children, you really got to start at middle school because they trans in after eleven years old, you, you can't touch them, you can't reach them on a regular conversation. And they don't have no respects for adults. They don't have none. And the technology today, you give them a tablet to go ahead and teach themselves. And you know what? Those phones and tablets have a lot of subliminal in them, all right? With our children, when you don't feel like being bothered and play with them, they give you the phone. And they look up and do research from the time they five and six years old. And it's amazing how smart they are. It's amazing. But we got a new administration to interact, wow, in the public school system. We have a new administration to touch our babies' lives. And I want to thank you for letting me get that off my chest. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Seeing none, that'll move us on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Councilperson Sharland presents Bill one thirty-one, Resolution Providing for Professional Service Agreement or Agreements with Maello Brungo and Maello LLP to provide legal representation as a solicitor of the Commission on Human Relations over two years with the option to renew for three-year, three one-year terms at a cost not to exceed one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number one thirty-two, Resolution Amending Resolution one seventy-seven of two thousand and twenty-two and Resolution seven twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-three, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into an agreement or agreements with SciCom Data Systems, Inc., for professional services relating to continuing maintenance, support, and upgrades to city law, the Department of Law's current legal case management and administrative support software system by increasing the contract amount by eleven thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars for a total not to exceed amount of three, thirty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars over three years.
Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill number one thirty-three, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Cooperation Agreement or Agreement with the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh for the performance of certain work in connection with home ARP and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed six million fifty-eight thousand six hundred and seven dollars and sixty-three cent.
Next is Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation Youth and Senior Services. Councilwoman Strasburger?
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill number one thirty-four, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Summers, McDonnell, Hoodock, Guthrie, and Rouch, P.C., for Expert Legal Services in Connection with Litigation Matter in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed nineteen thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-five cent over one year. Bill one thirty-five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Albert Risk Management Consultants in an Amount Not to Exceed fifty thousand dollars over one year for professional services by providing consultation and oversight for insurance amounts required by vendors entering into contracts with the city of Pittsburgh. Bill one thirty-six, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Cohen Law Group for Legal Services in Connection with the Telecommunications Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed ten thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cent over one year. Bill one thirty-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Risinger, Comer, and Miller LLC for Legal Services in Connection with the Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed thirty-eight thousand sixty-eight dollars and ninety cent over one year.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill number one thirty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements or the use of existing agreements between the city of Pittsburgh and Passack Plus MTR for the Professional Design Services for Fort Pitt Park Phase One Improvements at a Cost Not to Exceed three hundred thousand dollars. Bill one thirty-nine, Resolution Amending Resolution eight thirty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three, which provided for an Agreement or Agreements with MS Consultants, Inc., for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase for the California Avenue Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed eight hundred forty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and one cent, reimbursable at one hundred percent. This amendment adjusts only the accounts authorized to enter into this contract at no additional cost to the city.
Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, motion to waive Rule Eight, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number one forty, Resolution Amending Resolution Number seven fourteen of two thousand and twenty-three, entitled seven of two thousand and twenty, effective December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving. Bill one forty-four, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number eight eighty-six of two thousand and twenty-one, effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the two thousand and twenty-two capital budget and the two thousand and twenty-two community development block grant program and the two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-seven capital improvement program by reducing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by one hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Bill one forty-five, Resolution Amending Resolution Number seven twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-two, effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the two thousand and twenty-three capital budget, the two thousand and twenty-three community development program, and the two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-eight capital improvement program by reducing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by one hundred twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. And Bill number one forty-two, Resolution Appointing Kahari Mosley as a Member of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh Board of Directors with a Term to Expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
The appointment is informing, so we need a motion to read, receive, and file.
Motion, read, receive, file?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That now takes us to unfinished business. We actually do have a bill before us under unfinished business, just for members edification. A couple weeks ago, Virginia Beck, Virginia Beck, excuse me, was brought forward as a nominee for the CPRB board. We made a motion to interview. However, since then, she has withdrawn her candidacy. The motion to interview is still on the table. So after the clerk reads the bill, I need a motion to withdraw the motion to, withdraw the motion to interview and proceed with the vote. We'll vote that affirmatively, and then we'll actually take the vote, then we'll take the vote on her candidacy, which will be to say no, so that we can dispose of the bill and the mayor can bring forward a new nominee. Madam Clerk?
Bill thirty-five, Resolution Appointing Virginia Beck as a Member of the Citizen Police Review Board with a Term to Expire October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Motion to withdraw the motion to interview?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion has been withdrawn. Now we'll continue on with the vote. Those in favor, those in favor vote aye, those against vote no. We're asking that you vote no, so it can be voted down. Roll call vote?
Mr. Sharland?
No.
Mr. Coghill?
No.
Ms. Gross?
No.
Mr. Mosley?
No.
Mrs. Kail Smith? Mrs. Strasburger?
No.
Mrs. Warwick?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
No.
Eight nos.
Bill number thirty-five has failed to receive the legally required number of votes and is defeated. That moves us to reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Strasburger, Committee on Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill number one twenty-six, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for February seventh, two thousand and twenty-four with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number sixty, Resolution Amending Resolution Number six eighty-three of two thousand and twenty-two, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Clerk to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Dix Sporting Goods Foundation for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of ninety thousand dollars to Support Youth Sports Programming in Each Council District, to Add the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation as a Signatory on Grant Awards. Bill seventy-one, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Dicky McCamey and Chilco P.C. for Expert Legal Services in Connection with a Litigation Matter in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed twenty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-eight cent over one year. Bill seventy-two, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of a Single Payment in two thousand and twenty-four to the Allegheny County Health Department at a Cost Not to Exceed eight thousand dollars in Full and Final Settlement of Enforcing Proceedings for Violations of Article Twenty-One, Air Pollution Control. Bill number seventy-three, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number seven ninety-seven of two thousand and seventeen, as amended, effective December twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the two thousand and eighteen capital budget and the two thousand and eighteen community development block grant program and the two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty-three capital improvement program by reducing complete streets by seventy thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and six cent and increasing street resurfacing by seventy thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and six cent. Bill seventy-four, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number eight sixty-three of two thousand and eighteen, effective January one, two thousand and nineteen, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the two thousand and nineteen capital budget and the two thousand and nineteen community development block grant program and the two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-four capital improvement program by reducing complete streets by seventy-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-seven cent and increasing street resurfacing by seventy-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-seven cent. Bill seventy-five, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number seven twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-two, effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the two thousand and twenty-three capital budget, the two thousand and twenty-three community development program, and the two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-eight capital improvement program by increasing complete streets by two hundred and twenty-six thousand sixty-eight dollars to account for additional federal highway administration funding being received by the city of Pittsburgh. Bill one twenty-three, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article Nine, Property Taxes, Chapter Two Sixty-three, Rural Property Tax and Exemptions, Section Two Six Three Point Oh Two A, Discount in Advance, B One, Optional Triannual Payments, and D Due Dates, so as to amend the discount date for the two thousand and twenty-four fiscal year.
You have heard the reading in the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills, please vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill? Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nos.
The bills have been received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Safety and Wellness.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number one twenty-seven, Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for February seventh, two thousand and twenty-four with an affirmative recommendation. Bill sixty-five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with the Center for Emergency Medicine of Western Pennsylvania for the Provision of Medical Direction Services at a Cost Not to Exceed thirty thousand, thirty dollars over three years.
You have heard the reading in the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nos.
The bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 128, Report to the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for February 7, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Excuse me. Bill Number 77, Resolution Amending Resolution 442 of 2023, which Provided for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the Bridge over Route 51 near Woodruff Street, also referred to as the Parking Lot Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $625,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement, an increase of $28,000, at a total cost not to exceed $29,250. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. And Bill Number 79, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Receive Grant Funding from the Pittsburgh Arena Real Estate Redevelopment LP to Benefit the Rehabilitation of City-Owned Ammon Recreation Center and Park in the Hill District Neighborhood in the Amount of $500,000.
You have heard the reading in the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye. When their name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nos.
The bills haven't received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 129, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for February 7, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 67, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable in Favor of East Civis, Inc., for One-Year Subscription in an Amount Not to Exceed $18,000. And Bill 102, Resolution Amending Resolution 898 of 2023, authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into startup participation agreements with selected entities as part of the cohorts of the PGH Lab, and further authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into program participation agreements with local municipal entities to allow such entities to test products and services through PGH Lab at a total cost not to exceed $100,000 over one year. The purpose of the amending legislation is to correct the name of one of the cohort companies, and the amending legislation is not adding any additional funding.
You have heard the reading in the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye. When their name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nos.
The bills haven't received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. And lastly, Councilman Kahari Mosley, Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 130, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for February 7, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 68, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 1315 Western Avenue at No Cost to the City. Bill 69, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 320 Cedarhurst Street at No Cost to the City. And Bill Number 70, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable in Favor of Allegheny League of Municipalities for One-Year Membership Dues in an Amount Not to Exceed $9,000.
You have heard the reading in the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye. When their name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nos.
The bills haven't received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything for members? If not, we do have a few meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 2089 as it pertains to the updating zoning code standards related to childcare parking. Are you chairing that, Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Council Standing Committee Meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, February 14 at 10:00 a.m. Also tomorrow, February 14 at 1:30, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 2327 as it relates to authorization for property owners to operate a major public destination facility, electronic sign at West General Robinson Street and Mazerosky Way. To register to speak at any of these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. And lastly, on Thursday, February 15, council will hold a briefing to discuss police scheduling with sessions at 12:30 and 1:00 p.m. Now, do the motion to excuse absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.